Late from getting out from the back there, and we are about ten minutes late, so we're gonna move really expeditiously through this. As soon as I find the agenda.
Do you have this on bright, sir?
I hope so. I kinda buried it, I think, in the back. Oh, thank you. That always happens. Okay, the first item on my agenda is to have a roll call. This is a regular scheduled meeting of Macedonia City Council. Today is March tenth, two thousand sixteen, and the hour is seven forty-five, which we're fifteen minutes late, so.
Mr. Bilkey.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Ms. Hanlon.
Here.
Mr. Mulner.
Here.
And Ms. Tully.
Here.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna call on Commander Tom O'Brien from American Legion Post eight oh one, so he can give us the invocation, and thereafter, the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
With bowed heads, let us pray. Almighty God, Father of all mankind and judge over nations, we pray thee to guide our work in this meeting. We pray for those who serve the people and guard the public welfare, that by thy blessing they may be enabled to discharge their duties honestly and well. We pray for our leaders, that by thy help they may observe the strictest justice, keep alive the fires of freedom, strive earnestly for the spirit of democracy, and preserve untarnished our loyalty to our country and to thee. We pray that you guide your healing hands over our local officials after their heartfelt campaigns. Now that the campaign season has ended, let us show mutual respect for each other and work together for the common good of the citizens of Macedonia. Finally, O God of mercy, we ask thy blessing and comfort for our neighbors who are suffering mental and physical disability. Cheer them and bring them thy blessing of health and happiness. Amen. And now please face the plague.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plague of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain O'Brien, thank you again very much for being here. And leading us in the right direction. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the minutes of our February twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes submitted by council or by clerk.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, hearing none, the motion's carried. Next item is a financial report acknowledging the receipt of the finance report and dated January thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the finance report dated January thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, hearing none, the motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation, two thousand sixteen, World Autism Awareness Day and Autism Awareness Month. And I don't know, Josie, if they asked you to read this, or if I'm gonna read it.
Actually, Mayor, do you mind if you read it?
If I read it, sir, I'll read it.
You're gonna be a good guy to read it for me.
Yeah, did I give it to you?
No, sir, you didn't.
Okay.
I'll read it.
I thought you had it.
No, I wasn't. Here's a deck.
Well, I think, oh, here it is, I'm sorry.
But I'll be happy to read it.
I knew I had it, I thought I had it with me.
There's no spirit in the voice here.
Okay, bear with me, I didn't bring my glasses, 'cause I think I was gonna have to read all this, but I'll-
All right, all right, come on, you're gonna be-
Okay.
I'll read it.
You want him to read it?
I'll read it.
Come on, let him read.
A proclamation. Autism, whereas autism is the fastest growing developmental disability in the United States affecting more than three million people, is an urgent public health crisis that demands a national response, and whereas, in recognition of growing needs of the worldwide autistic community and to raise awareness about autism spectrum disorders and the need to provide services to individuals and families who are affected, the United Nations has sanctioned April second as World Autism Awareness Day, and whereas, Autism Speaks, an organization dedicated to funding research on autism and advocating for the needs of individuals with autism and their families, promoted the awareness of autism worldwide, and whereas, in light of growing impact of autism spectrum disorders and the need for greater awareness, Autism Speaks holds their Light It Up Blue campaign on World Autism Awareness Day, designed to increase awareness about autism by participating organizations to turn their lights blue, and whereas, the city of Macedonia of Summit County is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month and World Autism Awareness Day, in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the disorder. Now therefore, the mayor does hereby proclaim April second, April twenty-sixteen as Autism Awareness Month, and April second, twenty sixteen, as World Autism Awareness Day, in the city of Macedonia of Summit County, to raise public awareness of autism and the myriad of issues surrounding autism, as well as to increase knowledge of the programs that have been and are being developed to support individuals with autism and their families.
Thank you, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comments. First person, we would ask you to come up and state your name and address, and that's gonna be Carol, if I can say that right, Plaskovic?
Plaskovic.
Plaskovic.
Close.
Thank you, Carol.
Time's a charm.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be brief. It was about the pothole experience I had last year, and I received a letter from the insurance company, and I was not aware of this, but they only pay if there is negligence on the part of the community. Oh, I forgot, Carol Plaskovic, eight one four, South Ridge Road, Sagamore Hills. And I use, it was on Valley View, and the police department was not aware of it, and Officer Jordan said he would go and take a look where it was exactly. And so I did get the letter, and of course, they refused the insurance, because there was no fault on the part of the Macedonia, so. And I did give a letter to Officer John tonight, so he knows that that's what it is. So, I thought it was a regular insurance company, but it isn't. It's just that there's something.
You submitted that to our insurance company?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's JWF Specialty Company.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. I, it's unfortunate those happen, and I have to tell you that it's probably, we have a lot of chuck holes in our city. We've got about twenty million dollars of road repair that we need to do, and hopefully this council will make some decisions that will help us get the monies and the funds in our coffers, so that we can handle them. Shirley Coth.
Came to complain about your one again?
No. Shirley Coth, nine oh two Eileen Drive. I wanted to talk about one thing that happened at the last council meeting, and that was the censure of Sylvia. And I'm not gonna comment on the content of it, or anything like that, because none of us really know, because there was only one side presented, and Sylvia did not get a chance to present hers. But it led me to wonder how this kind of procedure should be handled, and how do other people do it? So I went on the Internet, and I looked up just censure, procedure for censure of council members. The one thing that came up right away was one for South Lake Tahoe in California, and I'm gonna pass that out, because I really think there ought to be a procedure for this. Nobody should be blindsided the way Sylvia was, not any one of you should. And it was at the very last minute in the meeting that it was made, and it didn't give anybody a chance to look at it, to respond to it, let alone Sylvia. And I know that's been a complaint with many people about things being presented at the last moment, and nobody has a chance to look at it. And I just don't think it's, I don't think it was fair. And I don't know whether it was warranted, because we don't know the rest of it. But anyway, I'm gonna pass this out.
Mark, can you grab it?
Mark.
Yep.
And I just thought it was interesting to see one city's approach to it, and I will tell you that there were a lot of other things, and this just came up on my first screen in the Google search. So I didn't do any deep research on this or anything, but there was also other cities that believed that they didn't wanna have a procedure on, a protocol on censure, because they felt that that would stifle public speech and free speech. And I understand that, as looking through this, that there are times that maybe that is an appropriate measure to take, and I'm not commenting on whether this was or not. I'm only commenting on the process that was used. And so I, you know, I thought they had put a lot of thought into this. So anyway. Then the other thing, part-time health benefits. I should've probably said something when this was coming up this last time. I'm totally against part-time health benefits for any employee within the city, which is what we're speaking about here. And the one thing that I thought was, I wouldn't have a problem with it if the employee themselves wanted to foot the entire bill, and say, you know, which maybe somebody would wanna do that, if they could get decent benefits and so forth, and foot the whole bill. I do not believe that the city ought to pay any, not a penny, towards it for any part-time employee, and I sure don't think we ought to be paying for them not to be using it. So, and I know that's something that's in our rules somewhere, so, but I think that's, I just think that's ridiculous, so that's my two cents worth, I'm sorry that it's after As I've been sitting in on some of the budget, the budget meetings, and this has occurred to me not only this year, probably going over the last eight to ten years since I've been sitting in on these meetings, I feel like there doesn't seem to be a process that the city has for the department heads to know how to structure and present their budgetary requirements. And so I'm just wondering if something could be developed, so that there is more structure to what they're presenting and how they're presenting it. And I know it starts out, you know, when you're talking about what you need for your budget, what you would like, you know, what your needs, what your wish list, and all of that, and that starts out with a big free-for-all. And I understand that, because you gotta throw everything out there, but then you gotta be realistic in where you're at. And I just feel that, I mean, the meeting last night maybe solidified that in my mind. It just seemed that there was so much, that this far along in the process isn't really solidified to the point where you're just getting ready to give it to the finance director to put into the budget. So I, I don't know whether I'm wrong on this, but it doesn't seem that there's any rhyme or reason to how it gets put together. So that's an observation on my part. And I think, I had a couple of other things here, but I think I've had these questions answered, so that's it. Thank you.
Shirley, thank you very much. Kathy Loyah.
Good evening, thank you very much. My name's Kathy Loyah, nine one eight six, North Bedford Road. I just wanted to urge the city council to once and for all do something about stormwater as it pertains to legend North Bedford. GPD submitted their report, and I'm sure that all of you have received that now, and hopefully it had a chance to review it. What I take away from it is that to address and remedy the stormwater situation, it's going to be large, and it's gonna be an encompassing task, and it's not going to be cheap, because it requires property acquisition. That's what was recommended by GPD, and the property acquisition includes mine. I fully understand Sugarin Valley needs to review the data that they have, and that they're gonna have their own ideas and suggestions about the situation, but please, do not provide a Band-Aid to our situation, and don't do something just for the sake of doing something. Do it right, do it complete. Again, city council, please be the ones to once and for all do something that past councils have not been able to do, or unwilling to do. Make the hard decisions when it comes to stormwater for our area. The problem's been there for decades, it's not gonna go away by ignoring it. In fact, it's only gotten worse, because it has been ignored for so long. Frankly, I wasn't surprised by any of the findings or recommendations that GPD made in that study, because I've heard them all before in the past. And now that city council last year set the precedence for property purchase because of stormwater issues, I'm optimistic. This was done last year on a property that didn't even have close to the amount of current information on my property. My property's been studied, and studied, and studied, and nothing ever gets done. So if nothing happens now, the problem's not gonna go away. So if in a few years, when I'm back up here again, speaking my two cents, driving everybody crazy, are we gonna have to go through yet another study? It's a real problem, stormwater is a real problem. And I have to look out for my family, and is, and that's the reason why I started speaking up here last January, January of two thousand and fifteen, about this issue. Stormwater does consume my mind as it pertains to the infiltration of my property, and worse off even into my home. Stormwater remedies for this area have been recommended by GPD are very large, and again, drastic, and not cheap. Please, don't try and reinvent the wheel here. Look to the obvious, look to the facts. Again, I understand that Sugarin Valley, as the new city engineer, needs to take that data that GPD has and look at it themselves, but please, no more studies. It's time to do something about the situation, particularly as it pertains to my property. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Did you did the data?
We did, we apparently-
Just today, we finalized an agreement with GPD, so if that doesn't, it's not forthcoming tomorrow, it'd be early next week, I think that we'll get all the data.
So we got the agreement done, but not the data yet?
Correct. Is it signed, the agreement? No, I have it actually with me tonight for the mayor to execute.
Okay. Next person would be Dan Kress.
Good evening, I'm Dan Kress, eight nine five, Skyland Drive here in Macedonia. And just wanted to come and address a couple of things that have me very concerned. First of all, I know that we tabled some legislation about making changes retroactive on the taxes, and I can only imagine you were all a little stunned to think you were gonna try to pull two point six million dollars away from the people you represent and their families, and the people who are trying to make mortgages, and trying to save money to put their kids through school, and really not give anybody a fair shot at it. So I really, really respect the people that put that on the table and said, we need to, we need to step back a bit from that. So I think that's very good. I think my topic that I set was, and when I wrote down what I wanted to come up about, was about setting priorities, you know, priorities on problem solving. Here's a lady here that's obviously had a problem for a long time. And Mayor McGloriney and I had a little discussion in my driveway when he was soliciting my vote, and that is that the priorities for government need to be two things. One, safety and infrastructure. Those are things individuals can't do for themselves. I can't pave the street in front of my house, she can't fix her sewer problem. And yet, what do I read in the paper this week? Is we're trying to figure out, should we put an outdoor pool? When the city got into the entertainment industry, you took your eye off the ball. The ball is, you're talking about twenty million dollars that you need to fix the streets, and yet, we're worried about, are we gonna build another pool? So I think it's very easy, if you focus on what the role of government is, which is to do things that are beyond the ability of the individual, and you all need to pay attention to this, then I think, and get out of the entertainment industry. People can find a way to entertain themselves, that's not the role of government. Role of government is to do what individuals can't do for themselves, and that is pave the roads, fix the sewer problems, fix the wastewater, and the stormwater problems, and focus ourselves on that, and you won't have to be worried about whether you're gonna be able to yank another tax increase out of your constituents. That's all I wanted to share with you, thank you for hearing me out.
Dan, thank you so much for your comments. Rose Casimir.
My golly, I haven't seen her in a while.
Hello, excuse me, my name is Rose Casimir, I live on Chinook Trail in Macedonia. And I just wanted to make a couple comments about the issues of the roads, and the taxes and paying for them. I'm as tight with my money as anybody I know, and I really don't like seeing my taxes raised either, but I do recognize there is a problem with the roads. I think what council did last week about, let's look at our budget, and let's see if we can cut expenses, and even the mayor mentioned that he's gonna try to cut expenses, is very important. The man that came up here just before me mentioned that about priorities. Yeah, this is an issue of priorities, and it's an issue of priorities about what the city does with its money. The department heads are supposed to present what they, and I heard Jan Tully say this, what they want, or what they need. I think it's really important for each of these departments to cut their expenses again. This was done back in, I think it was two thousand whatever, before we had the temporary tax increase. And at that important time, the tax increase was a quarter percent. With the mayor's proposal, he's really asking for everybody to pay another half percent that pays income taxes in the city of Macedonia. As far as the roads go, I mean, a fair tax would be charged by usage, but this is kind of impractical. You'd have to stop every car, truck, train, or whatever that runs through the city, and make them pay a toll charge. So I think if you're gonna raise the taxes, you have to do two things. One, cut all existing unnecessary expenses, look at all these additional hires, thoroughly ask yourself the question, why are all the budgets up fifteen percent? And is there anything that can be done to hold down salaries? I don't know, there's maybe union agreements where nothing can be done. As far as paying for this, I would be willing to vote for a temporary real estate tax, where I know that the money was strictly earmarked for the roads, and if any money comes in on income taxes, I think that should be strictly earmarked for the roads. It's too easy in government to manipulate the funds and switch money back and forth between funding, and I don't think that would be a good idea. So that's all I have to say, and you guys have a difficult job in front of you, and all your department heads have to really think hard about what you're doing for people, and is it really necessary? And that's all the comment I have, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda would be any pending and/or new legislation. The first item is Resolution Number Ten, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Resolution Number Ten, two thousand sixteen, for his third reading. My title only.
A resolution requiring the city of Macedonia to participate in the OhioCheckbook dot com.
You've heard the reading.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to oral Resolution Number Ten, two thousand and sixteen. That adds the statement of resolution requiring the city of Macedonia to participate in OhioCheckbook dot com, effective January of two thousand seventeen. I think it's important, we just have a new finance director, we are making changes within the finance department, and it's interesting that the people who are now participating in this checkbook are schools, there really hasn't been a lot of activity in the community side of the public cities. I believe, you know, this would give us some time to get our department stable, to be able to focus on the roads, focus on the stormwater, focus on our budget, and then in January two thousand seventeen, I have no problem with full transparency, then we have the opportunity to go ahead, adopt this checkbook, and go forth with putting our numbers out on the web. Right now, we're being told it will have no dollar impacts, it will have no hourly impacts, but I've heard otherwise from other mayors. I also think it would give another year's time for this to really gel. I've tried using it, it has crashed on me, it has frozen up on me, and I've heard those complaints from others, so I have no problem supporting it, but I would like to make it effective January two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Let me just make one comment. I was pleased to hear in the last few days that the city of Akron, which also had been debating this, is going to adopt it. I don't know if it's gonna be for two thousand seventeen or two thousand sixteen, but they have gone through quite a series of meetings with the treasurer of state and tried to understand it. So my own feeling was that, you know, I don't mind a short delay, I was thinking more if there was an issue here because of the budget construction, that we could delay till July first. But I understand that we have a new finance director, and I do believe that we should move ahead with this. So I don't know what other people's thoughts on this are, but I'd like to hear them before we vote.
I actually had the same thoughts as Jan, I was apprehensive back and forth. I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea to do this, but I wasn't comfortable to vote for it tonight, because there's just a lot of unknown. But if we let it get a year, we could start this on January seventeen, I think that would be-
The preparation would then start actually this fall, you understand?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm happy to hear that other members are supporting this issue, although they wanna move it out, and I thought we should at least move it out until August or September. I think it's more important that we, that we vote to enter into this program. I think transparency is extremely important, particularly when we're having issues that we're maybe going to the voters to ask them to raise taxes. I think that we need to do that. I thought that the presentation last year was, our last week was very impressive. He noted that sixty-five percent of the voters go to the Internet to find this type of information. He said that there are currently two hundred and fourteen cities, including Stowe, which I think Summit County is a leading city, and a city that has a good government, and there's another five hundred and fifty-nine that have committed to grow, to become part of this group. And so I'd rather wait, if that's what it takes to get this passed, to get that commitment, because I think this is important, that we have this added transparency. So if that's what it takes to get this voted, I'm all in favor of Jan's proposal.
Okay, I think, I will just make a final comment, since I'm the one who initiated this. I'm a strong believer that transparency is critical here. One of the good things about our particular accounting system is that this should fairly well simplify what we have to do, and reduce the amount of work, because it's got its own reporting structure that feeds right into the system. But I can accept an amendment that is being proposed, because I think it's critical, I agree with David, that the transparency issue be satisfied, and if it's going to take us a few more months, I think it's important that we do it. So let's do it now.
But the amendment is already on the table.
I have, I have one suggestion to the amendment. Given the fact that it's the administration that obviously has to implement this, and we don't really know what impacts we're gonna have, even though it's so stated that it wasn't going to take very long, I would like to add to this, is that there be a sunset on this legislation after one year, for reevaluation as to what impacts it will have on our finance department, and having to do this transparency that you believe that this is. We know we have open records law, we know that you can ask for this stuff at any given time by any resident. Last year, we had over a hundred and fifty public records requests, so-
Three hundred.
Or more than that, I'm not even sure how many, but we had a lot, so-
But we've had one-
Hey, I got a question. So I'm a firm believer, the only stupid question is one's not asked. What does sunset mean?
Sunset means that it will run for one year, we reevaluate it and see whether or not we're going to continue this type of program.
If I may, Mayor, I think that we always are reevaluating things, and we, you know, if you go back in the last six months, there've been at least a half dozen, or maybe more, where we've repealed legislation, we've amended legislation that's passed. You know, I certainly am going to pledge that if the administration and the finance director comes and presents compelling evidence that this program is expensive, hard to deal with, and a waste of time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to do away with it. So I don't think that we need to put that in the amendment, I don't think it's-
If I understand your amendment request, that's exactly what it does, Mr. Engel. It says that in one year's time, we will look at it to evaluate for expense, our spend, and was it worth it or not? If we say it's good, it stays. If we say it wasn't worth it, it ends. I, I mean, that's exactly what that amendment means, from what I understand.
I took it the exact opposite. I thought that the mayor was saying, we're gonna do this for one year, and it's gonna end unless we pass legislation to re-up it. I'm just saying, let's pass it, I'm gonna pledge, and I think everybody here on this dais is gonna pledge to reevaluate, I don't wanna have legislation that ends, that we have to repass.
I'm not in agreement with that. I think that we will forget about it, it will be, or I'm not gonna forget about it, 'cause I'll be here for four years, so-
Well, my amendment stands for this not to become effective until, I have no problem with doing it, I just don't think this is the appropriate time, I don't think- I don't think the system is ready yet, and I don't think that it's fair to our finance department with the activities that are occurring, and that's why my amendment stands to begin this in January of 2017.
Will you accept my amendment, my additional amendment, asking that it have a sunset?
That should be voted separately.
It's already the second.
Right, we have a second.
Well, I'm asking for the motion.
You have to withdraw your motion if you want to change it, to amend.
Okay, so I'll draw it.
Okay, we have a...
And I'll resubmit my amendment to make this checkbook participation effective January 2017 with a sunset review evaluation at the end of 2017. Is that okay, Mark?
If you want it to be an evaluation, yeah.
Yes, I do.
So if I understand, Jan, you're saying we will evaluate it, and then in a year, decide if we want to then terminate the program.
Terminate or keep it? Absolutely. At the end of 2017, absolutely.
But we're not automatically terminating it unless we vote for it, are we?
Vote to terminate, yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'm trying to clarify.
Well, let me take the second on the motion of the amendment. That we had a withdrawal, so now we have a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'm trying to understand.
They do need to know what we're motioning.
Yeah, I don't know what the motion is, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, her motion is that she wants it to start January 2017 and sunset on December 31st, 2017.
So it would end at that date?
It would end, and with the caveat that there would be a reevaluation as to whether or not this program should continue on, and what impacts it will have upon our finance department, and how much time we're spending to do this.
Right.
That's the motion.
So the motion is, we will have it for one year and end it.
Why don't you have a second, and then you can discuss?
Yes.
Can Mr. Bilkey say?
Okay, Mr. Bilkey, second, so we have a motion, a second, now comments.
Jan, is that what you, I thought you said the exact opposite, I'm sorry, then what Mr. Migger reading is saying?
No, it begins in January of 2017. On December 31st of 2017, we evaluate to see whether we sunset and remove ourselves from the program, or if we believe it should be renewed.
I think what they're asking is, do we have to vote to approve it again, or if we, okay, that's what...
Yeah, it would be an automatic termination, if that's what Mr. Engel is saying.
If we want to continue it, we're going to have to vote for another one.
So that forces, number one...
I'm asking whether it's an automatic termination.
So it'll be effective, you'd participate for the entirety of 2017, you'd have to reapprove it at the end of 2017 if you want to continue.
And what it does is that forces the review, and that it's not forgotten. I understand the mayor's concern it could be forgotten, overlooked, it forces the review. And we may adopt it again, or we may say no.
Exactly. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bilkey?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
I really don't like the sunset part of the motion, but I feel, I fear that we won't have a majority vote if the motion is not accepted, so I'm going to vote for the motion.
Ms. Hanekin?
No.
Mr. Mulnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment to the legislation has been accepted, now we have a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post Resolution Number 10, 2016, as amended, and post according to law.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, are there any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion's carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance number 14, 2016. We've got an amendment to this. Would someone like to offer the amendment to be included in the legislation? Kevin?
I gotta go to my notes here real quick.
Is this okay?
Yes. I move to adopt the amendment for ordinance 14, 2016.
You want to amend the first version of the ordinance to conform with the version introduced?
It's a no.
It's all good.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second to that?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, are there any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. As we discussed in a very brief work session tonight, this was just made available to us.
This is not for passage, though, Dave.
I understand.
Okay, all right.
Can I continue?
Sure, go ahead, I'm sorry, I just wanted to let you know.
All I'm saying is, right, I understand, but all of my suggestion is, you know, we haven't had any chance to talk about this, we haven't read this. I would like to, before I'm forced to vote, be able to read what the original plan was and read the new plan, and maybe be able to discuss it next week. So all I'm suggesting is that the amendment is, the motion to amend is premature, and I would think that we should wait until next week after you've got a chance to read this, because I don't even, you know, maybe I'm silly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, thank you for the comment, are there any others? Can we have a roll call, please, for the amendment?
Mr. Bilkey?
Just want to make sure I'm voting, I'm voting on the amendment, correct?
Right, just to add, yes, to switch the two exhibits out, yes. Mr. Engel?
No.
Ms. Hanekin?
No.
Ms. Tully?
Did you skip somebody?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mulnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Okay, the motion's carried. I just want to make this comment. The reason to get the amendment on it, we're not asking it to be passed tonight, Dave, we're asking for the amendment so that the people of the community and others can see how we have it amended, so that they can view it. And if then they have any comment as it's amended, then they can make comment back to us. If we don't make the amendment, then you're making the amendment at the very end, and there is then no opportunity for others to give us their opinion about whether or not this is a good or a bad law that we're trying to pass in the city. That's the bottom line.
Mr. Mayor, can you explain real quickly who worked on the amendment?
Yeah, I want to thank Chief Golden, I want to thank Lieutenant Yapapovich and Mark Godetti for their efforts in putting this together. We spent quite a bit of time trying to come up with a good security plan for our shopping center and big box users in our city, and that's what this legislation's all about, so that you, as residents, can feel more secure when you go to any of our shopping areas, and know that when you go in, there is security at the door, that they have a loss prevention program, and that's what we're attempting to do with this legislation. It's, the amendment is one page long, and it all, all it does is it delineates, if you will, the difference between a 25,000 square foot box and a, and it goes up beyond a 100,000 square foot box, and what they're required to do if they have incidents of theft in their facility that amount to six within a given 60 days, I think it's six or five, five. It's five incidents within 60 days that would then require them to then implement some of these different plans that are on this legislation. So everyone will have an opportunity to see this legislation, because now we have put the amendment together with it, so it will be posted out by the door so that anybody who would like to see it in the paper and what have you, news media. So thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 17, 2016.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer that we hold ordinance 2017, 2016 at its second reading, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to hold 2000, or ordinance number 17 at a second reading. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion's carried. Next item on the agenda...
Just to go back, we did not hold 14.
You didn't.
So if you want to do that, so I'll do it right now.
I would do it. Okay, perfect, perfect.
I move that we hold ordinance number 14, 2016 at second reading.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to hold 2014 at a second reading. Are there any questions?
Good, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion's carried. Then moving on to Resolution Number 21, 2016.
Mr. Mayor, I moved to offer Resolution Number 21, 2016, for its first, second, and third readings by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I see that Jackie's here. We've had Pat Lakowski, who has served, by the way, for the city of Macedonia for as long as I can remember on the Summit County Health Board. And I want to thank Jackie Nettle here, who's present this evening, sitting right there with that pretty greenish-blueish coat on there. She's willing to sit, she will have to obviously attend the Summit County Board of, Summit County Health Department meetings, which I believe are once a month, and she's willing to do that, so we thank you, Jackie, and hopefully we'll have a motion, or we have a motion on the floor, and we're going to take a vote at this time. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Who'd dub?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was a motion, that was the three reading, waiving of the three readings. All those, it's passed, now can we have a motion to adopt?
Oh, I move that we pass and post, there we adopt Resolution 21, 2016, according to law.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion's carried. Jackie, thank you very much for your willingness to serve on that board. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 22.
I'd like to offer ordinance 22, 2016, for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion's carried.
An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Macedonia.
You've heard the reading?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd move that we pass and post ordinance 22, 2016, according to law.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 23.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 23, 2016, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
An ordinance creating the new position of Information Technology Director for the city of Macedonia.
Okay, you've heard the reading?
Mr. Mayor, I'd offer that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number 23, 2016, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, are there any questions or comments? I'll just say for the sake of saying that we, for the first time, are hiring an IT director for the city of Macedonia. We have been using contracted services for quite some time. We have grown to the point where those services have grown, and the cost that the city is paying is kind of going to be a wash. IT is obviously where it's at into the future, and we need to keep up with all of the computers and all the hardware that we have in this city, in the various buildings that we have, and the integration of the new GIS system that's coming about from the Summit County. We need to be able to integrate that into our system so that we can better serve our residents, and also serve better when we're, we have emergency situations, and there's a lot of data and a lot of information out there that we need to bring to one place. So having an IT individual coming on board is exciting. The individual's name is AJ Allen, and he's coming from, he actually has been working for the Nordonia Schools, and he's going to be starting on Monday. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion's carried. Thank you. Next item is, that would be ordinance number 24.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 24, 2016, for...
I have, I have, you are absolutely correct, and I am wrong. I'm not, I'm sorry, I numbered wrong. You were right, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Once I was right.
I'm on the right number, correct.
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
It is, I'm sorry.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 24, 2016, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion's carried.
An ordinance establishing the position of zoning inspector of the city of Macedonia and amending Chapter 159 of the codified ordinances.
Okay, you've heard the reading?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance, I'd like to make a motion to pass and post ordinance number 24, 2016, according to law.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 25, 2016.
I offer ordinance 25, 2016, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion's carried.
An ordinance amending the compensation schedule for the non-union city employees of Macedonia, which was adopted effective January 1, 2016.
Okay, you've heard the reading?
I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance 25, 2016.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, again, is there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 26, 2016.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Resolution Number 26, 2016, for its first reading by title only, please.
A resolution pledging cooperation by the city of Macedonia with the village of Northfield, the Summit County Infrastructure Committee, and the Ohio Public Works Commission regarding the here-and-after described improvement in authorizing the mayor to execute all contracts with the village of Northfield and the Public, Ohio Public Works Commission regarding an infrastructure grant.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 27.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Resolution Number 27, 2016, first, first reading by title only, please.
A resolution pledging cooperation by the city of Macedonia with the village of Northfield, the Summit County Infrastructure Committee, and the Ohio Works Commission regarding the here-and-after described improvement in authorizing the mayor to execute all contracts with the village of Northfield and the Ohio Pub, Public Works Commission regarding infrastructure loan.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is motions and other legislative items.
I have one, but if I could backtrack for one second, just a brief explanation of the last two resolutions. We talked about this in our work session, it's essentially applying for a grant to work with Northfield to pave led roads, so we're trying to get some state money, federal money, to pave that road, because we know it's in disrepair, and Northfield's aware of it, too, so we're trying to partner with them to get a grant to do that, and then find a way to finance that. I also make a motion to approve the terms of the proposed settlement as outlined by insurance counsel and forwarded by the mayor on March 2nd, 2016, in regard to U.S. District Court, Northern District of Ohio, case number 513-CV-00668, and Stiles Farnhurst LLC et al versus City of Macedonia et al.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, just have a couple of clarifications here. The email that I received from the mayor's assistant was on March 4th, is that what we're talking about, that email?
Correct.
Okay, so this is March 2nd?
Yeah, it says March 2nd, because there was two that went out, yes.
Okay, all right. At any rate, and my second question is just to clarify, among the listed things here, it says, "All parties release all claims, and the insurance company for the association and for the city will forego pursuing payment of attorney's fees." So that is the agreement at this point?
That's part of it, that's part of it.
Yes, I understand it's part of it, but those specific areas of cost are approved. Am I correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Are they, they're approved by all parties, including our law department, is that correct?
Nothing's finalized as of yet, but that's one of the proposed terms.
Is that in the record, or isn't it, at this point?
Yeah, it's part of the agreement. It just hasn't been assigned, because council hasn't approved.
Right.
Okay, all right. So my only question.
Okay, I mean, just again, for point of clarification here, this is a ongoing, this was a federal lawsuit that was put against the city of Macedonia as it relates to the Parkview Homeowners Association, and it had to do with a lot split. Unfortunately, this case cost the city of Macedonia hundreds of thousands of dollars. There were individuals like myself who was individually sued, along with the homeowners association, which I was the president of, and we have now finally got it resolved. There's only going to be one house built on that lot, lot split is not going to be recognized, there's only going to be one, one home built there, as I indicated, and we're not going to be pursuing any attorney fees, which I unfortunately have to say that that's as a part of the agreement to settle this matter, although the defendants will have to pay sanctions, court costs, sanctions, and other fees that are related to this case. Okay? Not the defendants or other, I mean the plaintiffs, the plaintiffs. Okay, you've heard, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion's carried. Next item, item on the agenda is correspondence, just from-
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I have another motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Since we're in motions first. I'd like to make a motion to cancel the special meeting that was scheduled for, I believe, the twenty-third of March, and instead, um, schedule that meeting on March sixteenth at eight P.M. following the, um, budget meeting, finance meeting that will be occurring at six o'clock.
Or, or at a time right after the, uh-
Immediately following.
Immediately following is good.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments?
There are comments. We, we have a complex set of issues to discuss in the budget meeting, and I think that there will be revisions to the budget that need to be done, so I, I don't know that we have an urgent need to do anything other than have the meeting that we plan to have on the twenty-third, and I was con, concerned if we don't have a chance to fully review everything that, that comes out of the meeting, which we won't if we're going to have a meeting right afterwards. That's my concern.
I have the same concern. There's a lot of issues that are still remaining to be worked out in the budget, particularly with capital and, and, uh, we, with my understanding that we were going to get an updated, uh, budget before tonight's meeting, but I, I didn't see it when I briefly checked my emails when I got here, so I don't know when that's going to be coming, so.
I do have an update from Rhonda that I was going to pass out during the committee reports. It does not go through every line item, but it summarizes what we talked about last night, and the question of what was the cost last year versus the cost this year, you will be getting that tonight. And then Rhonda is working to have all the line items updated and out to us, if not tomorrow, on Monday, so that you have time to peruse it before the meeting on Wednesday. At this point in time, please be aware, we have zero dollars, zero, for capital, other than those things that we have, uh, encumbered, and things that we have to legally do, such as an EPA review.
We, just, just to, just to reiterate, just to, just to reiterate, the, the meeting is to be able to go through this whole series of line items and adjustments and questions, and we already have a scheduled special meeting. This gives us the opportunity for Rhonda to give us the final version. If we do it on the sixteenth, there will be a final version, and she'll be able to present, get it to us within a couple of days, probably, and I don't see the need for, you know, we're not, it's not like there's an emergency that we have to do, so I, I don't see why we don't just follow through on the original plan. I don't, I don't get it.
I think the issue is this, is that last night, we, we were here for, what, almost three hours? We, we, we've gone through a lot. I think we came to a lot of good conclusions as a council to, to move us forward. I think we're down to really just a few items with the Service Department, and then there's some finite items we need to work out of what we're going to do going forward with whether or not we're going to have some type of levy or what we're going to do, so that's the last two items that we need to discuss at that time to, if we're going to have a two-hour meeting, I think we could work that out in that time. We're down to several items. We're not down to the entire budget where we're going to work through everything. I think we're going to be able to work through these problems, come to a consensus, we can come on the floor, finalize our budget. There's no sense of pushing out another week when we're going to finish it off on that day.
I understand what your opinion is, Mr. Molner, but just good practice is to have a final version that has been solidified before you vote on something, and so, you know, there, there is, there is no reason why we can't have that. If we want to have a meeting two days after the sixteenth, I don't have a problem, but I want to see a final version, and this, you know, this is-
You will have a final version tomorrow. What you have in your hands now is actual for two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, increase, decrease, an explanation of why there was an increase or decrease. Um, one of your questions is what was the budget for two thousand and fifteen? And, you know, Angela's done the math for us, and, or Rhonda, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Angela. Rhonda's done the math for us. Also, there was a question last night, payments made to income in two thousand and fifteen, it was seventy thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-one cents. If you look at the explanations to the right, we've gone through everything in this budget, and when we come down to capital, we have uncovered that we will be transfers. We need two million one, and we don't have it. I don't think there's any clear way to state it that we don't have it.
Mr., Ms. Todd.
That the actual two thousand fifteen transfers were three thousand and six. The transfers for two thousand sixteen are only one-four. We're down by two million. Um, you know, this is a pretty, general fund was thirteen last year, it's eleven this year. Let's hope the projections on revenue are wrong, but based on what we've been seeing, they've been pretty steadily, unfortunately, in the wrong direction. My amendment, or my motion is on the table.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor at this time. Uh, all those in favor, well, let me have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bilkey?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Uh, no, I think we need more time.
Ms. Hanekin?
No, for the reasons I stated, we haven't had time to go through a final version. When we get a final version, which this is not, then we should vote on it. Otherwise, it's a, it's not doing the people's business. So that's a no.
Mr. Molner?
Not to be redundant, but we have already gone through the entire budget. We are literally down to a skid steer with components for the Service Department, and whether or not we want to put a levy on them. That's all that's left. I'm not going to belabor this thing and, and take more time and spend more money on employees, and lighten this building, and turn the heat on, and having all these meetings when we're down to two items. Yes.
And Ms. Todd?
Yes.
Okay, the motion's carried. Um, any other motions forthcoming? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Mayor's report, and since it's Mayor's report, I'm, I'm going to comment then on the finance meetings and, and where we're really at, because, yes, we've had two-
Gavel.
What's that?
Just talking over, over-
Okay, sorry. There's, um, we've had two finance committee meetings. Yesterday, when we left out of that finance committee meeting, the only issues that we had is what the difference was of the increases, the three employees, or all the different employees that were going to be new hires versus those that were replacements, and those that changed the budget from two thousand fifteen actuals to what two thousand sixteen is. Those are all on this one sheet right here, which were provided, uh, by Rhonda today. It was very simple, if you look at it, it, we're not talking about, uh, having to study the dictionary here. This is a very simple, one-page document, and hopefully, we'll be able to have council digest it and come to a meeting and get it resolved. This budget has to be passed by the end of the month.
Right.
So, we have this opportunity to get it passed next week, and I don't, if there's a problem with it, I would ask that you would communicate to the mem, uh, to the Chair of the Finance Committee, as well as Rhonda, and we'll deal with any questions that you have between now and next Wednesday. And if you have any questions, please send them to us in writing, and we will answer them, and we will incorporate them, so this is your opportunity to get those in between now and next Wednesday.
May I make a comment, or is-
No, I'm, this is Mayor's report.
Okay, all right, I'm just asking the question.
Okay. I appreciate all the comments, by the way, that were brought forth by residents in, in, in the community about different issues, and, and I, the one comment was, um, by Shirley here about department heads bringing forth their, their budgets. The department heads didn't bring nearly what they would have liked to have brought. They're realistic.
That wasn't my point.
Yeah, but that's, you kind of said you needed to come together there, but nevertheless, let me comment on it. I think the department heads realize that we have major constraints in this city as to what we can or cannot do. I just took office. The condition of this city and the finances of this city are such. I have, as, as the administrator, I have to make decisions on everyone's behalf and ask that council support those decisions so that we can continue to move this city forward. This city, and I'll say it again, has operated on a shoestring for as many years as I can remember. Back in, in the early eighties, I took office as a councilperson in this city in nineteen eighty-one, and I have to tell you, the city didn't have money then to pave the roads. When nineteen eighty-seven came about, and I became mayor at that time, I had fifty thousand dollars in the capital improvement budget for all of the things that this city needed. We continued to build a heck of a tax base in this city, and we did a good job at it, but what's occurred over the years since then is we have lost revenue sharing, we have lost the inheritance tax, we have lost the tangible tax, we've lost a lot of taxes that, that have supported this system, in addition to the fact that you as residents have not had any real estate ta, increases on your real estate. Now, you have by the schools, unfortunately, but you have not had any by the city on your real estate. The city only gets nine point three percent of your real estate dollar. Nine point three percent. I need to kind of say that and drill that into everybody's minds. The city doesn't make a lot of money there. Where do we get our money? We get it from the payroll and profit tax that comes in from businesses in this city, and if we didn't have such a good business base, this city would be in terrible, terrible condition. We have twenty million dollars in roads, with another ten following behind. We are not keeping up with what we need to do in the infrastructure, and we have to do something about it. Yes, people want the recreational needs, and yes, they probably will have that opportunity to either continue that, that comes November, depending on what council wants to do. The survey was very clear. I can appreciate what you're saying, Dan, and I appreciate that, you know, nobody wants to be taxed. I personally am taxed very heavy in this city. I pay a lot more taxes than a lot of people do. I'm willing to put my money out there to help repave these streets, because I know it's a need to be done. If we don't protect our investment, that is, the infrastructure in this city, and put some money out there by the residents to help support that, then the value of your properties will be diminished, and you really need to realize that. It will be diminished. You will not get the value out of your property. Could you imagine people coming into the city to look to buy your home, and then look at your street and say, "My God, the streets are falling apart. Why would I want to move on that street?" They're just not, it's not going to happen. I mean, we need to take and rebuild our infrastructure. It's gone way, way too long, and this council needs to make some tough decisions here, and I hope that they decide to do those tough decisions, and I'm here not to win a popularity contest. I got elected to make things happen, and that's what I want to do. We talk about stormwater, stormwater issues are premier. You can't just fix your streets without taking care of your stormwater at the same time, so those are other issues that we have to do, and I hopefully will move this city forward. But I want to read this one little thing to you, because this came out in Cleveland dot com, not that I am crazy about Cleveland dot com, but this, this article kind of made sense to me. It says here, and this has to do with the governor who's, uh, running around, going to be reelected as, or is asking to be reelected or be elected as president. But it, it really talks about the fact that the governor has cut the revenue sharing, the local revenue sharing, to communities, and that the Cleveland dot com had gone around and surveyed, and it says here, and I'll read verbatim, it says, "A town-by-town examination by Cleveland dot com found that more than seventy cities are down at least one million dollars a year because of budget and tax decisions made since Kicic took office in two thousand and one." Then you go to the next page and look at your local revenue sharing as to where Macedonia was at one time. We were, we were receiving previously seven hundred and six thousand dollars that would come back under the local revenue sharing. You know what we received this past year? It was two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and everything keeps diminishing. Everything keeps diminishing. Where do you get this money? If you don't have the money to do your roads, you don't have the money to keep your police force and your safety forces in place, then folks, then we, we won't have good services in our community, and why would people want to move to Macedonia? When you pick up your phone and you call for a policeman, you get one. When you pick up your phone and you call for a, an EMS squad to get to your house, you get one, and you get a, a good one, by the way. So, those services are there, and we're doing a good job at providing those services, but it takes money to provide those services. Nothing's for free. With that, I'm going to move on. Uh, committee reports.
Nothing like doom and gloom than having to go next, right?
Okay.
So I am, uh, we met, uh, the first week of March, the Parks and Rec Committee, and we started talking about ways that we want to reintroduce on the levy. We also have the results of the survey, but I believe Angela's going to talk about those during her committee, or, her department head report. So, I, I, not to belabor the point, street care, safety, all those important, but also up there is Parks and Rec. If you don't have a nice Parks and Rec system, then, then you're not providing everything you can to your, to your city, and I'm a firm believer in that, so that's why I wanted to be on the, on the committee, and that's all I'll be pushing for. So we are probably going to, um, finalize when we want to reintroduce the levy that has been, um, on the city for the last, what, seventeen years, and, uh, we'll go from there in the next few council meetings.
Okay, any other committee reports?
Of course, I'm going to talk about the finance real quick. Um, one reminder about the finance committee, this is the mayor and the administration's budget. We hold the checkbook. They have to come to us and ask, "Can I buy X, Y, and Z? Can I hire, you know, three people, four people?" To the mayor's point, the fire department and the chief had had come originally asking for three people. He removed that from the table. The service department asked just once, "Could we try and get back to where we used to be eons ago with personnel?" He removed that from the table, and now he's asking for part-time. The police chief came and wanted several things, and took it off the table. Every department has already started making concessions, because they recognize there's no dollars. The way we've been doing the budget this year is the mayors and administrations. It is up to them to put together the request, and we say yea or nay. It worked for fifteen years. It will work again. If we have to change something, we can always amend it throughout the year, but based on how this budget is put together, we probably will not be doing the fifty-five amendments that had to be done last year. We have a serious situation, and as I stated last time, we don't count in our reserves. That's our savings account, and I think that's part of the concern, is we were counting in the reserves. We need to be financially responsible. We need to be physically safe and sound, and gosh, I hate saying it, but it sounds like we're right back to where we were the last few years I was on council. When I look at the revenue, it's not there, and that's what we have to take a look at. We did talk about replacements, and we talked about new hires. We talked about capital and the fact that there is no capital, other than, as I stated before, what's been already approved. We have a serious situation, and I don't like being doom and gloom, but we have roads that we'd like to take care of. Not once every, well, it took me fifteen years to get the B streets done. Bruce, Bonnie, that took a long time. We'd like to be on a maintenance program so that John's crew isn't out there, uh, well, the giant holes are back everywhere, and we had a pretty good winter. Our next meeting is to finalize this budget, and again, we'll be revisiting it throughout the year. We just don't approve it and walk away from it. We have to take a look at it constantly, and the discussion around the revenue, that just started really last night. The whole issue of the tax credit was put on here to start that discussion, and to get it moving now, and not when it's too late. So, if you're always welcome to these meetings, I'm always open to what other suggestions do you have for revenue? I've said it time and time again, Dr. Jenkins is the one who came up and said, "Why don't you pass a quarter percent? Do the roads." This council last year chose not to do that. Maybe we should. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Okay, hearing none, they go on to department. John, do you have anything?
Yes, a couple of things, Mayor. Uh, one, the lack of winter that we've been having this year, just to let everyone know, information-wise, we will have about three thousand ton of extra salt stacked in our buildings this year, at the rate we're going right now, so we're going to need some pretty good covers the last year of the season, through the summer. It's going to take a beating. We had problems before where the tarps ripped open, and we get that hard crust on top from the rains, uh, so we're starting to make arrangements to using both garages at Twinsburg Road and at nine thousand to split them both, and we'll create a stocking area for that. at nine thousand to split them both and we'll create a stocking area for that. On a warmer note, now this is almost spring, we're getting close, we're two weeks away. Tinkers Creek Watershed Partners is going to be hosting a rain barrel workshop here at City Hall on April fifth from six to eight, uh, six-thirty PM to eight o'clock. I got to attend this workshop last year. It really was a lot of fun and informative. It's fifty dollars to buy a kit to tie into your downspouts. You use the rainwater, you collect rainwater and use it for your own gardening. We're free water, right? So it's, it's real nice, it's a nice display they put on. You can paint the barrels, you know, decorate them any way you want to suit your home. Like I said, the cost is fifty dollars. If anyone is interested, I have some flyers with me I can hand to you. Or you can contact Babad at three-three-zero-nine-six-three-six-two-four-three to register. And you have to be registered by March twenty-ninth and paid to attend the event.
With the caveat that the barrels should be probably located behind the house, not in front, in front of the...
Would be better that way, yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you.
John, I have a question for you. It appears the DOES is working over on Crow and marking things. What is going on there?
Every time it rains, they go there to suck that area out because the infiltration goes on there. I don't know, I'm on vacation this week, so I haven't talked to anybody.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know what they're marking out.
They are, they were doing quite a bit of staking and marking there.
Are they?
And they mentioned to a couple of the residents who asked me that they've had an issue with, obviously, we know they've had an issue with overtopping of those sewers there and having backups. But you were not told that they are trying to do something specific?
Well, I think that they're responding to a situation that occurred with a flooding that has been going on with a couple homes over there that has backed up into their basement. And I think that they're finally getting to the point where they, they may know what the problem is. So that's why they're marking things out.
They claim they found a broken pipe of some kind.
Okay, so, so...
But they're going to...
We can find out exactly what they did find and relay that information.
Thank you.
Okay. Joe?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few things to report on. I-271 widening project, we remain in touch with ODOT. They're still on schedule to finish the work in fall of this year, so that's good news. They also continue to work on the bridge over Ledge Road. And with regard to that bridge work, we expect to see some short-term closures on North Freeway Drive and South Freeway Drive. We'll work with ODOT to find out the exact days of those closures. So they'll close one and then the other. State Route eighty-two, they also are still on schedule again for a fall of 2016 completion date. I'm sure we're all looking forward to that. And lastly, Ambassador's Football Complex started work on Monday, tree clearing only at this point.
One other thing that I'll mention that I'm very disappointed that we were not able to get the turning lane in off of Shepherd Road onto Route eighty-two in a westbound direction. So the thought behind that is, is to let the state complete the project because they wouldn't let us intervene to get that turning lane in. And I don't understand why it wasn't put into the original plan, but hopefully after they're completed, we may be able to go back and revisit and see how we could get the turning lane put in. So we thought we were doing it in a timely fashion, but the state just doesn't want to delay the project, which would push it into two thousand and seventeen. All right, Angela?
Thank you. A few items this evening, as Kevin had mentioned, the survey that we conducted from January fifteenth through February eighteenth, the results are in. I did email completed report to all of the members of council before this meeting today. So if you haven't yet checked your email or had a chance to, you do have those available to you in your inbox. Based on the results of that survey, we had seven hundred and thirty-two people respond. Out of those people, sixty-nine percent of those were residents. And out of those residents, eighty-four percent indicated that they would support a renewal levy to support future growth for recreational amenities and leisure opportunities in Macedonia. So obviously, this is a sampling of people in the community. However, we feel that those numbers indicate a pretty strong support for this moving forward. So that is something that we will be exploring along with the Parks and Recreation Commission here in the future. We do have a few upcoming events that I would like to mention. Our Nordenia Spring Craft Show is scheduled for Saturday, March nineteenth. That's from nine to three at the rec center. We will have a free kids' craft area from eleven to two. And the Easter Bunny will be making appearances between nine AM and eleven AM that morning. And that is free to the public to attend. The same day, we have our aquatic Easter egg hunt in the pool area. We have different time slots beginning at one PM that day for ages that range from six months old up to eight years old. So again, the Easter Bunny will be making appearances in the pool area as well. And that is a very favorite event that we have every year. So we encourage people to come in and sign up for that event as well. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Rhonda?
Thank you, Mayor. As we discussed, we had a finance committee meeting last night. I made the majority of the changes. The reason you didn't get it today was I still have some open questions on some potential items in capital that I might either be able to take away or have to keep in there. So as soon as I get that completed, you'll get a copy. What I had Jan pass out to you today is just basically what the questions were last night for the general fund only, by department. The line items include the differences from the two thousand and sixteen budget compared to the two thousand and fifteen actual and showing the differences by line item and then kind of giving the explanations for the major items that were in there. And then also, at the very bottom, unfortunately, it's kind of small, is how much we had paid to income last year. And then we're just going to continue working on the budget. If you have questions, let Jan and I know and we'll see you next Wednesday.
Rhonda, could I ask you?
Yes.
We're going to, you're indicating we'll get an updated appropriations budget...
Yes.
...within the next day or two?
Well, I'm hoping to get the questions answered by Mike tomorrow because obviously tomorrow's his last day. So I want to get him, I was going to call him, but his cellphone was shut off today and I wasn't able to get ahold of him.
All right, I just, it would be important to get that because I can't give you my...
I'd like to get it to you before the weekend, so you have all weekend to look at it.
I'm, I won't be able to give you a complete set of questions without that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
No report, Mayor.
Chief?
I put an entry on Facebook about some of the construction projects that are going on. The first one you're going to see on eighty-two is Windstream's moving a line down the westbound lane in the center. So they're going to divert traffic to the right side. That's going to happen ten o'clock at night till six in the morning. So the majority of people should be affected by that. Traffic should flow through there just fine through the nighttime hours. But if you want to see some of the other projects or construction issues that might come up, check out our Facebook page. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mark, do you have anything?
No report, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Any unfinished business by council?
Yes, I do have a couple of things. One, I just want to make sure, this is first, just very short. The amount of debt that we've been carrying in the last twenty years has been extremely onerous. It's been one point zero six five million annually for, to pay for the rec center building and this building. That is expiring at the end of this year. We will have paid those off. And when we say we don't have money for roads on a permanent basis, I think those who are looking at this believe that we should replace that levy, that quarter percent, which would still keep us at two percent, dedicating it to roads and stormwater and some recreational projects. What the mayor and some of the other council members are recommending is that we raise your taxes to two and a quarter percent. That's really what's behind this. Second point, because of the surprise censure in the last council meeting, I didn't have a prepared answer to what was being alleged. I hadn't even understood it was going to happen or, and didn't have any of the details. I have read through it and reviewed it and I do have a statement that I'm going to put in the record concerning the censure itself and how I view my role as a council person. So I'm going to be doing that now. And I apologize that I have to do it in this forum because, in fact, you know, because of the things that were said, I, I'm really, I'm really needing to be able to respond to this stuff in a, in a formal setting. So first, let me say thank you to the many Macedonia residents who have emailed or spoken to me, stopped me in the store and have spoken to me personally about their outrage at the personal attacks and censure visited on me by the city council majority at our last meeting. Your outrage about the ambush method of that censure and your personal gratitude for my continued service as a Macedonia council member are truly appreciated. Second, I want to describe what I believe the Macedonia council members' oath and duties are. As a Macedonia council member at large, my focus is on representing the residents. The residents are my true teammates, quote unquote, and their interests come first. The words in the logo describing a prominent retail company's approach to its customers say it best, "What matters to you matters to us." And to pray for that as a council member, what matters to the residents matters to me. As a council member, you have elected me to work hard, ask the hard questions, and make sure the city responds to your concerns as residents. I've certainly devoted my efforts to accomplishing that mission on your behalf. Council members are not elected to agree with each other or to, quote, "Go along to get along," as a famous former speaker of the House, Sam Rayburn, said. Council members are elected to contribute an independent view and thoughts to, so that Macedonians can be assured there is not a rubber stamp of the administration and its actions and that the best outcome for the residents is achieved. Third, I work with other council members and administration as professional colleagues who are in service to Macedonia residents, not personal friends. Their interests are considered, but their interests are secondary to the interests of Macedonia residents. I am not looking backward to the past election or holding a grudge. As I've already noted, I am working for the residents and that's my focus. Since the November election, I have voted with the new administration on replacing the finance director and city engineer and voted against retaining the Demerit Firm as a law department. I have done so based on what I believe is best for Macedonia residents. Because I'm committed to transparency, I alerted Macedonia residents to the mayor's plan to retroactively raise income taxes without a vote of the people. The mayor and certain council members took umbrage to that, but I know you want to know what is going on, especially the things that are vital to your pocketbook. Fourth, I want to address the specific accusations of the censure complaint. I did consult our existing finance director in the fall of two thousand and fourteen about the two thousand and fifteen budget because I wanted to be certain that I placed funds in the right appropriation lines. The objective was to satisfy the administration's desire to have road repair bids out early in FY twenty-fifteen so we would get the best price, value price for Macedonia residents. I asked for input from the department heads and that was received. The budget appropriations were completed in December two thousand and fourteen and the mission was accomplished. The mayor's failure to follow the Macedonia charter and restore our finance director to full-time duty made this work much more difficult and onerous than it needed to be. I am not complaining, but there was a lot of extra work for me because of that. The council majority felt it was important to our residents to get the road bids out and Mr. Engel and Mrs. Darrow thanked me for this effort. To ignore that reality and censure me ex post facto is a violation of the U.S. Constitution and shows a backward-looking attitude. I did discuss the Pla Farnhurst case, which, with the city of Macedonia's insurance company attorney. That was not improper or illegal. I did so because our city law director and his assistant law director were named as defendants in the case early on in the litigation phase, March of two thousand and fourteen, that is. And I wanted to hear from an attorney working for our city whose opinion was not biased by being a named defendant in the case. I simply asked our insurance attorney for explanations or clarifications of the judge's rulings. As a council member, I was not only concerned about bias, but the cost to taxpayers. This case ending up, ended up costing the Macedonia taxpayers approximately one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Over eighty-five percent of this cost was for the Macedonia law director's billings, when it could have been settled for sixty thousand or less in the early stages. The federal judge in this case later ruled that our law director and his firm were disqualified because of potential conflict of interest on their sta, because of their status as defendants. The case has finally been settled in March two thousand and sixteen, you just heard it tonight, after almost three years of litigation. This settlement is a good thing, but in my opinion, over one hundred and seventy thousand spent on road repair rather than on this case would have been vastly greater beneficial to our residents. As a footnote, I was deposed in the Farnhurst case under subpoena and told the truth about what I witnessed as a resident attending city meetings in two thousand and twelve. My role was minor and it had zero to do with the settlement of this case. Council members are elected to contribute that independent view and we have done so. Let me just say, to summarize, I am only concerned about the residents' interest and cost in that case and nothing inappropriate was done. End of story. Finally, and I have to discuss this because apparently this keeps coming up like whack-a-mole. This censure complaint repeats the false report concerning my visit to Summit Point owned by Capital Senior Living on November second, two thousand and sixteen, that were apparently originated with their local facility executive director. I was accompanied by a friend and witness, the entire time was at Summit Point, which was about thirty-five minutes, and none of the allegations about my visit there are true. The statement that I did not go to the front desk on arrival is false. In fact, I did go to the front desk upon arrival and asked to talk to the activities director about a leftover Halloween candy donation that I had with me. I was told by the activity, that the activities director was on a shopping trip but would return shortly. The statement that I entered the Alzheimer's residents' locked areas is false. I did not enter any locked portion of the Summit Point facility during my visit. While I was waiting for the activities director to return, I walked down the first floor hallway and visited with a number of friends, resident assistants, and nurses that I knew because my mother was a resident at Summit Point for several years. So I know many people over there and many of them are friends. My friend and I left after accounting the local facility director while visiting with some friends in the assisted living activities room. This woman, who was the executive director, informed me that I could, could not, quote unquote, "campaign" in the facility. I wasn't even doing that anyway, I was just chatting with people I knew. And I questioned her as to why the mayor and other council members had been permitted to campaign in the facility. And just as a parenthetical, I should explain that I know this director because she was the facilities director at the, in the final year before my mom passed away in two thousand and thirteen. When Summit Point accidentally discarded some of my mother's furniture during her final illness, I went to her and asked her to reimburse my family for the loss. She refused and I was forced to go to a senior national operations director in that owner company to get that matter resolved. I subsequently received a reimbursement and a letter of apology from the company. I think it is fair to say that the local facility director was unhappy about that and her attitude toward me was affected. My friend and I did leave Summit Point without incident shortly after encountering this local facility director. An hour and a half later, while I was campaigning in Macedonia, not in the Summit Point, a friend called me to tell me that a police call card concerning my visit to Summit Point had appeared on the Facebook page of a local Migglarini and Molnar campaign supporter. I told this friend that I had not been contacted by the police and I knew nothing about any police visit to Summit Point. And what was said on the call card, as described to me, was false. The friend who was with me at Summit Point subsequently called and emailed Chief Golden to tell him that she was with me the entire time and the call card report by Summit Point was false. The chief informed her on email that no changes are made to call cards, so the call card could not be corrected. I followed up with the police to find out how the police call card ended up on the I followed up with the police to find out how the police call card ended up on this supporter's Facebook page almost instantly. I had figured the police department's raw call card reports do not show up on Facebook pages without a city employee being involved. I did not receive an explanation. Let me reiterate, I was not asked to confirm any of these statements made in the censure report on Summit Point allegations. To have these lies repeated without any chance at refutation is a reflection of the haste of the council majority and the mayor to condemn me without discussion. And finally, and lastly, I believe this council needs to move on from conflict and revenge and refocus on the residents' interests and concerns. I pledge to do that and appeal to others to do the same. That's my statement. Thank you, and I'm going to offer this to the clerks and have that recorded as part of the record.
The only thing I would like to say in response to your comments is that this was a council censure, if you will. That's number one. And number two, I take great exception as it relates to the Parkview Homeowners Association and your intervention into that case and suggesting that it should be settled against all the residents in the Parkview Homeowners Association, that were being sued, by the way, and you were lending your support to the Plas, who were obviously working on your campaign, and you wanted to have them settle with the insurance company, the city's insurance company, that's why the insurance carrier and their attorney, and the insurance attorney said, "I want another representative to come to these meetings, and I don't want it to be you, Sylvia." So, it was him who suggested that you not be a representative of council, going there and representing this body.
Yes.
So, let's get that straight.
Mr. Mayor?
And I take real exception, because I was a defendant in this case.
Yes.
I was being sued personally in this case.
I understand.
And this court and Judge Leoy, federal Judge Leoy, made a decision, a summary judgment decision...
Which has been...
That there was no case, so...
No.
Yes.
Sir...
Are you gonna question Judge Leoy now?
No, I'm gonna say she vacated that order, and she did not say there was no case. She said there was no federal case.
That's right.
Just to correct it.
Okay.
She, and she vacated even that order, as you're well aware.
There's no evidence to support any of the claims made.
Yeah, there's no evidence to support a claim. So, you see, you're, you're still trying to defend...
I have not defended...
Two guys that were suing this city.
I'm defending...
That's where your problem comes in, lady.
I did not defend those people. What I said is the residents should have spent $170,000 on roads or stormwater and not on this case.
I'm done.
That's my opinion. Thank you.
I'm gonna make one quick statement, and I want to thank you for yours, Sylvia. I think it was appropriate and good that you finally admitted that you worked with a man who was on administrative leave, which is why, one of the main reasons we censured you, so I want to thank you for that tonight. Second thing is, that budget that you developed with that director who was on paid administrative leave for his behavior had 55 amendments to, to correct the defunct budget that was put forward. I've alluded to it before, we were told $2.5 million carryover, 1.2. That's all I need to say, and with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion?
What do you do with the money?
Who's gonna second the motion?
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion's carried.
[inaudible]
That's what you wanted, that's what we're gonna...